Good afternoon, everybody. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The first order of business is special session. We'll entertain a motion at this time.
So move, Mr. Mayor.
To go into special session. Got a motion and a second? All in favor of going into special session? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is for the introduction of an ordinance, City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, Series 2013A, and City of Hagerstown Drinking Water Bond, Series 2013B, for the R.C. Wilson Plant Improvements.
General Obligation Bonds to the Maryland Water Quality Financing Administration in one or more series in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $10,708,400. Proceeds from the sale of the bonds will be used for the public purpose of financing the R.C. Wilson Water Plant Improvements as more fully described in the ordinance, together with related expenses and cost of issuance. Staff is hereby also directed to proceed with developing the necessary detailed resolutions and other documents to proceed with the sale of the bonds as directed by this ordinance. The detailed resolution will be presented to this body for approval to future date prior to the issuance of the bonds as specified in the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to float a second.
Ha ha. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion and a floating second? Any discussion?
Yes, I don't think we can change this proposal.
Any other discussion? All right. All in favor of the motion as made? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the ordinance is introduced? We'll see this again next?
Two weeks from now.
Two weeks from now, the 23rd.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth, I'm sorry. So that'll conclude our special session. We'll open up our work session. The consideration of an ordinance for the water and wastewater late fee. Distinguished members of the staff are joining us at the table.
You're so kind. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to...
We're still waiting.
Thanks for the opportunity to come back again for some further discussion on the ordinance that we proposed two weeks ago, I believe. We did do some background information, again, as requested, and ran through some ordinances. Frederick City, Martinsburg, did Winchester and Cumberland. All basically the same. We mirrored Martinsburg's the most. As we had our discussion before on it, if you would like, I'll just since it's just a two-line, I'll read the ordinance languages proposing and have a little further discussion on how we will apply it. A late payment charge of 10% will be calculated upon the total charges and applied to the water and wastewater bill or any portion of the bill not paid by the current amount due date. Each subsequent water and wastewater bill not paid in full will be subject to the aforementioned late payment charge on the unpaid balance. So how this would actually look for a customer, and we'll do it in round figures, which helps Scott and I immensely. In January, if they received a bill for $100, after 21 days, we would apply a $10 or the 10% late fee on it. And this is already specified in our city code, the time designation. After 20 days, the bill becomes due, considered past due after that amount. And then nine days later, at 30 days, then we can start the termination process if it's not completed. To finish my thought then on how the bills, since we're not going to compound the interest on the total of bill, if for some reason after the 30 days, we did not go out and terminate and they received another bill, so we're talking 60 or 120 days worth of usage. Three periods worth of, or three, it's three months' worth of usage.
After 90 days.
After 90 days. I'm sorry. The, they would receive another $100 bill, a $100 charge for us. That makes it at that point in time, after the 20, 20 days after the second bill was sent out, they would owe us $210. If you would compound it, they wouldn't pay that at that point in time. You would add 10% of the $21 on it, which would make the bill $231. That's not what we would do. We would only assess the 10% charge on the outstanding second amount, so the bill would be $220 versus $231. I apologize if I didn't make it as clear as possible, but that's the difference in the compounding and how we would institute it. They would only owe $221 after the second bill was not paid.
220.
220. That is correct. Versus 231 if we compounded it on the total due.
Are people able to work out the payment plan so that they would not have the late fee charged if they lived up to the payment plan they made?
Yes. Yes, sir.
So the person who gets behind that first month calls you up and says, geez, you know, I can catch up that first month if you give me two months to do it, and I can make myself current with this month's bill. I can pay this one in full, but if I try to pay them both, I can't. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yes, sir.
And you're telling me we can avoid that by communication?
That's our typical payment plan that we do, yes.
As long as people, you're telling me that people can communicate to staff and set up a payment plan that won't cause them to never be able to get out of anything but add-on fees, which to me, just is a vicious cycle, that the very people that can't afford the bills, we charge more to.
Correct.
It's almost like doctors, where if you don't have insurance, you get paid, charged more than if you have insurance. So as long as we have a system set up to allow folks that are responsible, that want to call you and make a payment plan and live up to it, then I'm okay with this.
We'll make notification to all of our customers through the bills. We'll have a separate identification in there noting what the changes will be to the ordinance, have the numbers in for Scott's group, so they'll know ahead of time that we can set up, make payment arrangements. Once again, our thought process on this is we're just trying to collect. We're not trying to institute it. We just want them to pay when they can. If it takes them a month or two later to do it, we're still going to get it, then we'll work with them on it. So we'll still be a kinder group. We're not just going to put the hammer down on them right then.
Of the municipalities that you checked with, were they all at 10%?
No.
What was the range?
They varied in range. Go back. I got, I got on this one too. Yeah, Smithburg's 10%, Funkstown is 10%, Martinsburg is 10%.
Per quarter?
These are one-time, just as we're offering to do, for their billing period.
Non-compounded?
Non-compounded, yes. Winchester is 10%. Washington County is 4.5% one-time. The two that are different are Frederick County and Frederick City. They mirror one another. They're 1% per month, but they compound theirs. That's the difference.
Okay, so, my last water bill was $269. So I happened to go to Italy at the wrong time, and I come back 22 days later, and I'm going to be charged $27 to, because I happened to go to Italy at the wrong time?
First thing would be, call us before you go to Italy.
I might forget.
But if you don't, we'll work with you on that. We would work with a customer.
But they have to call is the issue.
And that's what we would, that's what we ask, is that if you know you're going away for an extended period of time, we would want some communication to that.
And just to use Eric's, since Eric Dyke is here, when the street sweepers go out, if individuals away on vacation, their vehicle is left there, we make special arrangements for them, once we're notified also, so, yeah.
Okay, well, let me ask you this. Is this, is this really, I mean, you know this business inside and out. You've been doing it a long time.
Yes, sir.
Is this really going to do any good in terms of getting people to pay their bills faster, or to get them to pay up? Or is this just going to make it that much tougher?
My professional and personal opinion would be the same. I would say yes. Because we do know there are individuals who have made statements to us that, why should I pay on time? I can utilize my money elsewhere if you're not going to charge a late fee payment to us. As you can see from the listing, we are the only utility within the three-state region that we check that does not charge a late fee. Even, I didn't mention Williamsport, Williamsport, Funkstown, Smithburg, they all charge a late payment fee. We're the only one who is not.
My final question is, why did you suggest 10% as opposed to 4.5% or 5% that Washington County charges?
When we looked at it originally, using the smaller groups that we actually sell water to, each one of those is a customer of us, that would keep all of us in line. City of Hagerstown and the other three municipalities, all using the same figure for calculation. That was part of our theory behind it.
Okay, well, then it's not my last question. Under, if we pass this, under this, you do have the flexibility to drop these fees?
Yes, sir.
I mean, this doesn't tie your hands where you can't, where you can't give somebody a break if they have a legitimate excuse. If there was a death in their family and they're out of town for a funeral, or to take care of somebody for a period of time, I mean, if there's a death in my family, I'm not going to remember to call you.
We understand.
You will still have the ability to work with these people.
Scott and I, Scott's in charge of that group, and me, I agree with 100%. I see no reason why we wouldn't work with a customer.
I mean, there's nothing here that ties your hands.
No.
The one thing I don't want to get into is taking 600 phone calls a day from people that don't want to pay a late fee. Now, if they have, obviously, if they have a legitimate excuse, we always listen, but we also, I also don't want to get into the point where we're taking, with my five staff taking phone calls down there, you know, 600 phone calls from folks that don't want to pay a late fee.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about 600 phone calls. I'm talking to somebody that calls you and said, I had a death in my family in Minnesota, and I was the only one that could take care of it, and it took me a while to do it.
And that's all researchable information that we can verify, yes.
Okay.
If I can comment on that, I think the credit card companies, at least mine, tend to handle it that if you, they look on how regularly you pay. If you're calling every month with an excuse, they're not going to accept your excuse.
And we do that, and that is...
And I've been told by people that run that, that it's like, no more than two a year, you know, but otherwise, they look at the regularity and timeliness of your payments.
Yes, sir.
And then you have credibility. But if you're calling every month, then you don't have any credibility. So I think that would have a lot to do with it. They're not going to research that you were in Italy or had a death, but if you have a whole chain of unpaid bills or other problems, then, you know...
Our system, our system is very flexible in that when staff make payment arrangements, it's noted, and if someone calls in and asks for another payment arrangement, or has not kept a previous payment arrangement, or is a frequent, we call them frequent flyers, it's readily seen on that account. So that also goes a long way towards whether we decide to extend a payment arrangement at that point.
And the issue is not whether you're going to decide to do it. The issue is, do you have the flexibility to do it?
We do. Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I'll just give comments, because I'm one of those that's on the budget plan, and I'm glad that I am, because summertime is a killer, a real killer. And the only thing that I can see is by Don asking these questions, and people now that it's going to respond, if he goes into the newspaper, as to, oh gee, now I know how to get around it again. And again, we then set that whole precedence on, now you're going to have to watch to see if these are going to be the ones that are going to be the constant offenders again. And for the most part, the ones that come in are the ones that you can technically say, they've been here before, we've had the problem before, and this is what we have to do. And I'm sorry, there are a lot of poor people, a lot of poor people, but those poor people, most of them can get more money and can get help than what we can, okay? So it's a matter of, the city has always been very helpful as trying to get help for these people. They've even contacted agencies, and I know that. So, you know, I think what you're doing is fair.
Yeah.
I mean, it's dollars that belong back in here, that other taxpayers are paying for. We have to pony up with it, so, you know, I'm sorry. And believe me, sitting here, I'm not a rich one.
And commercial and ratepayers as well, who look at these things, are going to be encouraged to pay on time, because now there's a penalty if they don't.
Right.
Those are, that's a huge amount.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think that's important, too. I want to raise an issue that was on the table the last time, and only, I've talked to staff, and I think, but it was the timeliness, the length of time from notification, from getting the bill to when the bill was due, which has a lot to do with whether you get the bill paid or not. It's 20 days according to statute, so I'm not proposing that we change that now, but I encourage staff to get the quickest turnaround we can between, you know, when you do the readings and when bills get out, so that you don't get like, a lot of credit card companies and other credit issuing companies, utilities, we're doing, where they were narrowing that gap until the regulations changed it back again, and they couldn't. So I just, you know, I guess the proof will be in the bills we all get, you know, how much time there is.
You'll see it.
Especially now that we have a fine, I'm concerned that we get them, and there's a reasonable period of time to pay the bill, at least two weeks, you know.
Any other questions?
So that's just a statement for the record, and then we could take for other action if that can't work for some reason, either with the code or whatever.
Yes, sir.
I have two comments. And the first is, I don't agree with the non-compounding approach. I'm not willing to fall on that sword, since we're at least getting something, rather than the nothing that we currently have. But, you know, when you look at that non-compounding approach, what that means to those that are paying is that they are carrying the costs of bills that are unpaid for six, nine months, 12 months behind. And the ratepayer, those are the individuals that are carrying that outstanding debt. So to not compound that means we're carrying that cost for free to that individual or entity that isn't paying. So I don't agree with that.
And we can help ourselves in that regard by utilizing the termination policy as it's written, and not going into that second billing period.
So that gets me to my second point, and this is an issue while it relates to collection and late charges for non-payment of bills, refers to a lot of those vacant properties. I think you cited about 1,300.
Yes, sir.
In our budget, proposed this year for disconnection of service. And one thing that we have been unsuccessful to do is, if I'm an individual, and I got one individual down the street, and it comes to mind, that individual now has vacated that home. That home is in the process of foreclosure. We have difficulty chasing down, so to speak, the outstanding debt that is associated to that individual that lived at that property, okay? So we have had difficulty in our ability to legislate locally, let alone get legislation passed at the state level, that would require, when that foreclosure proceeding occurs, that the property transfer from that vacated individual's name to the lending company or the mortgage holder's name that holds the note on that property, and is thus returned the responsibility for maintenance and billing and associated costs with that property. And one, one idea that I thought we may be able to sort of kill two birds with one stone is, if we were to develop, if we were to develop a program whereby the property owner vacates the property, goes back to the bank, the bank waits for whatever reason for 18 months to proceed with foreclosing on the property. And for 18 months, what we're doing is we're sending somebody, trying to find somebody to send a bill to that has vacated that property. So the thought here is, the state's never going to change the law that forces the banking, lending industry to assume ownership, deed ownership of that property, but maybe we could create some type of mechanism that would encourage those lending institutions to do so. By say, we would say, look, there's an outstanding debt associated with utility billing on the property. We're going to not simply disconnect, we're going to remove the meter. And you have two choices, lending institution. You can either assume within 90 days deed ownership of that property, or we're going to take the meter out and you can pay the reconnection fee when you sell that property to the next end user. And they have the choice, that they can either assume deed ownership, so we quit billing a party that's no longer part of that process, and remove that plight, so to speak, from that individual or entity, and place it in the lending institution's name where it should rightly be when they reassume ownership of that property. Ownership should be full ownership. And they can either choose to carry or let that individual carry that $500 that's outstanding in water bills, or they can pay the $4,000 or $5,000 it's going to cost to reconnect to the city water and sewer system. And that's just an idea that I would float out there, because I'm sure, and I see it in other jurisdictions, that you have trouble at times chasing down, so to speak, the responsible individual that has vacated the property, whether it be for water billing, or sewer billing, or maintenance, exterior maintenance of the property. And you can't, you can't, you can't press that responsibility onto the bank, because they haven't assumed deed ownership, and therefore, they're not rightfully responsible. But here's a mechanism by which through our utility provision, that we could possibly do that.
So you'd like us to bring legal counsel back at a future work session to flesh that, because there's more legal ramifications in regard to, than it is versus ordinance?
That's what I would like to see, because I think you're going to run into that with this whole late billing, sooner than later anyway, and you're going to be, you're going to be stuck in that position, on these vacated accounts. Any other comments or questions? I appreciate the council members' interest in this, and I think it is the right thing to do, just to keep us in line with what's going on in other communities, and also help compel people to be timely with their bills. Even poor people make paying their bills a priority. So I hope that we can get this on the...
So I can bring it back for introduction then, on the 11th, and then for approval on the 18th, and then it will become effective 30 days afterwards, then on July, whatever then?
Sounds like a plan.
Use the dates on that? Okay. And just for clarification from me, from our last meeting, everyone here was fine with us moving forward for the Hagerstown Light Department to move forward with the Maryland Public Service Commission on the 1.5%, which was what everyone else used, Smacko, all the other groups in Maryland used.
On the light bill?
Yes, sir, for the electric portion. Everyone was in agreement with us on that. Okay. We'll keep moving forward with that.
Good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is University System of Maryland at Hagerstown, and the possibility of renaming the North Potomac Street parking deck. Mr. Dyke?
Good afternoon.
Oh, and I'd like to invite Dr. Halsey to the table, too. Please come on in.
Hello, Doctor. Invite this is our assistant doctor, Aaron.
Aaron, would you like to also join us? Okay.
The city has received some information from the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown. The request was to rename the North Potomac Street parking deck in some manner that reflected the name of the university in it. My understanding is, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the idea was to create a more awareness of the parking deck as the preferred parking location for the university, since the university faces West Washington Street, and it's not obvious that the deck is the preferred location, since it faces North Potomac. So anybody, visitors or new students who'd be unfamiliar with Hagerstown, may not relate the two, in a situation that the deck is directly beside the university, you just don't know it, unless you're familiar with the area.
That's right.
So the, I think the word "university" seems to be the, one of the key words that they were looking for in renaming the deck. I had simply listed several options in here. I'm sure there's other variations. The most obvious being quite lengthy and wordy and probably not preferred, which is the University System of Maryland at Hagerstown parking deck, which would be quite a mouthful. And then there's other variances there, from the simple one being University Parking Deck to University District Parking Deck. That seems to be the preferred, at this time, seems to be the preferred name, but that's...
University Deck at North Potomac Street only is a formal name, so maybe when we, if we do rename the deck, our own citizens don't get confused when people start saying, come the University Deck, where's that? We have a new parking deck.
Marty?
I have problems with this issue, not because I don't want to help out the university and help out their faculty and students. My problem is, is that I'm afraid of the reverse effect, that people coming from outside Hagerstown that aren't going to the university will see that on their maps, their GPS, and if it's called any of these names, will say, I can't go there, that's for the cost, for the university. And I think that, you know, that parking deck is built for the CBD, for, excuse me, for Center City Hagerstown, for the use of employers and people attending business in Center City Hagerstown. And the university rents currently less than 50%. It varies, but it's well less than 50, well less than 50% of the spaces there. So I, much as I want to help them, I want to find, maybe compromise a name, I don't know whether it's public parking, the names all get too long, but public university parking or university public parking, but I don't like the idea of it just being identified with the university. I mean, if I want, I could go on for other things, like, you know, they have no financial things, except they pay a rent and things like that, but responsibility, but that's not what I'm after. My main concern is that will have the exact reverse effect. Yes, some of the students from outerlying parts of the region, or people that never come downtown anymore, may have an easier time finding it, going to the university, but on the other hand, I'm afraid that other people will think, and believe me, people are capable of thinking anything. People still say, new business opens, there's 200 parking spaces behind it, they won't go there because there's no parking. It's just that kind of thing we face here in Hagerstown, and we shouldn't create another obstacle. So it's not clear to me what the answer is, but I think it's a mistake to name it with the university when less than 50% of its usage is the university.
In response to that, though, I would note a couple of things. One, later on, I think it's on today's agenda, we're going to be talking about the signage, parking signage that was part of the presentation we all received. So for one, we're going to have signage, which makes it clear that this is public parking, in a much more productive manner, hopefully, than we have in this city forever. So for one, I would think it would be clear that that would be. Two, one of the reasons I suggest the name be University Parking at North Potomac Street is GPS things. If it gets named that, and somebody's looking for the North Potomac Street parking deck before those changes take place, I think there's enough of commonality for people to understand that's the same deck. And three, you know, this community, as long as I've lived here, has salivated for a four-year university, for an ability to get a degree. When you mention Frostburg, when you mention Salisbury, people think Salisbury University, they think Frostburg University. I'm not sure that many folks still think of University System at Hagerstown. And I would love people to start saying, University Deck? Hagerstown has a university? What's that all about? So I think, I think it would be a good change. I think it would be producing just what we want, a statement, just like, that's why we decided to name that plaza, University Plaza, is we want people to associate downtown... we decided to name that plaza, University Plaza, is we want people to associate downtown with the university, with the school for the arts, with arts and education, and I think renaming this deck to reflect that it, that there is a university in downtown Hagerstown would be a very positive thing. I understand...
Lou, I'd like to include the word "university," but something that indicates it's open to the public, other than signs out there. I'm talking, we're trying, just as we're trying to keep the university and do things for them, we're trying to get outsiders to come here. They don't know anything about North Potomac Street, they don't know anything about the history, they look on, I know, I travel a lot, and I use a lot of maps, and I, and you're often in a hurry, and you look at it and say, "Well, we can't go there, that's the university deck, we'll have to hunt for something over here." And I don't want that.
But I would say the answer to that is, I know when I've won the Frederick, and I would hope that the city of Hagerstown can have, we have the best IT people around, can have a website that has its similarities, and you get on the website, because most people don't use paper maps anymore. You get on the web, you get on the website, and you say, "Where can I park in Hagerstown?" And there it is. And the very people that you're talking about are the people that aren't familiar with Hagerstown, those signs are going to make it clear that it's public parking. They'll make it clear as the day is long, when people drive into town, everybody has the international signs for parking, for public parking, and I don't, if we're doing our job, we're going, people are going to know more with the renamed deck where parking is than they do now. That's...
And my GPS makes lots of mistakes, and has lots of misnomers about what's campus parking, what's not, things like that.
And I only reiterate that if it's university, university deck at North Potomac Street, or some, something that keeps the North Potomac Street in there, that that could resolve that issue.
Couldn't one argue that if it's called North Potomac Street Deck, that people might think that it's only for people on North Potomac Street? By extension of your logic?
I don't think that's the same argument at all. I don't think that's, a university is something everybody recognizes, and all kinds of universities have parking decks. I mean, you know, I don't think people think the street address is the locator, I just don't think that follows whatsoever. I'm sorry.
Marty?
Respectfully, I have to agree with Lou. I mean, we're talking about the education of people here, and surely, and surely, part of that, being able to read a sign that says, "University Deck, Public Parking." I think it does work, and it sends a great signal to the University of Maryland system that we're serious about their being here, and want their assistance on anything we do. At some point, and Kristen has raised this issue over and over, we're going to take a look at that block, and that's going to be our block of education, our university block in Hagerstown. And this is a good, that would be a good part of it.
But I haven't say, "Take the word 'university' out." I just say, "I don't like these names." I said, "University Public Parking." It's something, it sounds dumb, but it makes it clear that it's public parking.
How about university deck underneath it, public parking?
No, because the subtitles aren't ever an information you get from anybody anywhere. Again...
How about some council members we haven't heard from yet? Let's say you. I'm fine with whatever one of these four you want to name it.
There you go.
How about you, Penny?
Although I like district.
Yeah.
I do like the district, too, because I think that broadens it, Marty, and maybe that even takes away some of the concerns you have.
That would, actually, university district parking, it sounds like it's parking for the district associated with it.
If I'm going to settle for one, that's the one, but I wasn't about to propose it.
Well, let's settle for that one, then.
Yeah.
That would be consistent with the A&E deck, which officially is named the A&E District Deck.
And district, right.
Now, if you wanted...
That was going to be my next point.
There you go. Sold.
Okay.
So what are we going to call it?
University District Parking Deck.
Underneath, public parking.
Yeah, well, and I think Lou brought up a good point.
I know we'll do that, okay.
I think there is the universal big P, you know, that most people identify with public parking areas, that certainly will remain a part of it.
And that university district makes you clear what it is.
And we haven't told you about the fee yet.
Right.
No, the sons want to have signed, you know, naming rights.
The expectation, yeah, my expectation is...
It's naming rights.
This is a public service, Marty.
Did you tell them about naming rights, Eric?
In a decade, in a decade...
I believe that would be a good one by the council.
He probably did bring that up with me.
I don't know.
He's always looking to make money.
If you try to make your name on a parking deck, they would never be able to pronounce it.
Okay, well, I'm going to remember it.
The next...
Give that man an honorary degree, will you?
The light pole banner.
So it's going to be university district parking deck?
Yes.
University district. Imply that incorporates a larger arena.
So we do all three as at once?
That works for you, doesn't it?
And just to be clear, is this something we need to bring back at a regular session? Are you okay with us just moving forward with this?
I think it's great.
I'm okay with you moving forward.
Yes, I think so, too.
Do it. It's all right, that name is...
That's fine with us.
All right, it's been suggested by a council member, we amend the agenda to do items four and five while we have, while we're on the topic of the university. Is that okay with you?
Sure.
You guys? So let's do the light pole banners at this point.
Okay. I think the theme continues of recognition and awareness of the university. Dr. Halsey and I have had discussions about possibly putting banners on Washington Street, basically from the university down towards the square, and then also on this block of North Potomac Street, on the parking deck side, just as a proposal. But basically, the, right now, we have the larger poles, which are 30-foot poles, there we have banners on them that have A&E district, or some downtown logo. We change those out, there's four of those, and we put what's proposed in the packet on those poles, and then the smaller, what we staff call the pedlights, they're like 14-foot-high decorative poles, they don't have any banners on them now, and we would put these smaller, about this big size banners on those on Washington Street in Potomac. So that's the proposal, the, Dr. Halsey and I have discussed that we would split the material costs 50/50, and the public work staff would install them.
I guess my only concern is that it's not really readable, as it is going up and down like that, so I don't know if there's any way to address that, to make it more...
Well, at the very minimum, that you rotate the university logo around, so...
Well, you know, we tried that. We really did. We looked, and it just looks the way, and rotated this, and it seemed to create more confusion than it allows, than basically people just kind of slanting their head and looking at it.
I mean, it's certainly readable, that's not to be doubted, but it is awkward, I guess. Rodney?
I was involved with my guest today, New York City, Maryland, has...
She needs to be on the mic.
...the university of Maryland, has a Baltimore, Washington schools, and they're all oriented...
And they look fine, right? I think I've seen them, too, and so I would agree with you. The picture, it's a little crazy, but now that you mentioned, I was down there, and you're right.
And the logo is oriented with the red, with the rest of the writing, not...
Gotcha.
...at 90 degrees.
Rodney?
Yes, sir. What kind of materials are these things made from?
It's vinyl.
Okay, how are they kept clean?
I think the life of a banner like this is probably about three years, and at that time, you just have to replace them. I really don't think we have a program to clean them.
Okay, because if they get dirty, they're really going to look grungy, they're not going to be any, they're not going to be a good reflection.
Because they aren't white, yeah.
They'll have to be replaced, so maybe you need to keep a little bit of a supply in the back room or something.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think it's a great idea, again, it furthers the emphasis that we want to put on higher education opportunities downtown, and certainly in support of what we have with the university system. I don't hear any opposition, I'm sensing that there's some full support for this.
Thank you very much.
Rodney?
Great. And the next item is the smoke-free designation of the plaza. Just a little bit of history there, the plaza, it looks like one open space, but technically, the part where the canopies were just installed, the red, black, and gold canopy, that is actually the university's property. The city owns where the fountain is, and where the grass area is, where the new stage was just installed. Technically, based on what the Board of Regents has passed, the area that belongs to the university is already a smoke-free environment, as is the school itself, and the area that they lease in our building across the plaza. What they're asking for is that we would designate our portion as smoke-free, where the fountain is, where the grass strip is. And the way we would do that simply is just put up some, a few tasteful signs, whenever somebody rents that area or uses it, we would sit down with them and advise them that it's a smoke-free environment, and we would do some monitoring with city staff and through their staff as well. I don't see us actively enforcing that as much as we would just try to have voluntary compliance on that. So...
And certainly, our security people, I would talk to our staff about, again, it would be persuasive as opposed to, you know, baseball bats, but I will freely admit to having smoked in college, and I understand a lot of people do, but we also know that the, the public buildings, when they stopped allowing smoking in public buildings, that if you track it, that's when national smoking rates began to decline. And so if we can forward that thinking even a little bit toward outside of our building, just walking in what we're calling the campus between building one and building two, I think that would be a, a good signal for, for the students as well as the faculty.
I think enforcement, I tend to favor this, but enforcement could become an issue, because, let's say we enforce it with students on one end of that park, and then you have, you have people that use, it's an open public park, people sit there. Right now, they can smoke, I think, I just walked through there this week, and there were people smoking there.
They can, they do.
You're going to have trouble, the students are going to say, "They're smoking down there." And then, so, I mean, are we going to, are we going to be prepared to enforce this?
This is not, as I understand it, an ordinance against student smoking, this is in fact an ordinance against...
Well, I, but I just heard Rodney saying that we're, we plan to have voluntary light enforcement. I heard you saying you plan to have your security guards look there, and I don't know what authority, I'm not trying to be difficult, these are the things, though, that arise when you do this.
I would assume we would pass an ordinance, making it, stops adjusted a payable municipal infraction.
So, but we're going to enforce it, I mean, there's a difference between...
Well, the enforcement to the degree that I would like to think that, that we would enforce anything, and that's after requesting someone who looks at you and says, "No," that you then take the next step.
Okay, but that's different than what I just heard.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to clarify. I didn't hear that, and I don't think that's what you meant.
Right, I think I misspoke, but I think, you know, we don't have staff over there routinely, their staff does some maintenance in there, but we don't have people in there routinely, so we'd have to rely on their security folks and HPD.
Sure, and I think a $20 prepaid fine is fine, I don't know about you all, but it has been, it has been decades since I've run into all the data with anybody who says smoking a cigarette. And it's not because of the $20 fine. And I think that this is a very good first step. Candidly, I would have been very happy to have one on the agenda tonight, not this issue, but the issue of whether we should allow smoking in any of our park system anywhere. I personally don't think we should. I don't, I think the only way you allow that is in anticipation that you're going to have to put ashtrays or something similar throughout your system, because otherwise, the gentleman who was here a couple weeks ago was correct about, about people using the public ashtray, and I, too, was a smoker. I, my biggest concern, as it relates to any of these things, is the same thing you have anywhere, as we have candidly right next to City Hall, with the folks that are visiting the building next to City Hall, and that is, when you ban smoking from this university plaza, you're going to have then a lot of people on the sidewalk smoking. And I just think that needs to be understood, and we need to have the appropriate containers there for ashtrays. And I, and that's the only issue that I can think of, and I think you will certainly have that, and my guess is, especially in the back, you'll have it in the alley side.
But am I reading this that technically, we could find, I mean, we could cite somebody, and the maximum fine is $1,000?
If we wanted to make it that, I'm suggesting we make it a $20...
Well, but, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is, if we take the null option and don't establish one, there's not one recommended here.
Well, and the actual ordinance says $200.
$200, yeah.
But we just, but you all can set that amount.
Any other comments or questions on this issue? Indications of support, opposition?
I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it, we need to pass this specific thing, right? Yeah.
Right, it would be an ordinance.
We have to bring an ordinance back, June 18.
What do you think about the fine? What do you, I mean, a student, $200? I mean, is there, without a warning, how are we going to handle this? That's heavy.
I would suggest, my suggestion is a $20 offense, and for whether you want to say the third offense, the fourth offense, or whatever, did you increase the fine to a higher maximum penalty?
I like that. Because I think that's heavy for smoking.
And I don't think it should be the second offense, but I think at some stage of the game, because nobody's getting one of these citations, I can assure you, no one's getting them, until after they've been asked to stop, and they've been told, and they've basically said, "I'm not going to do it." Nobody's calling the police on anybody unless they're just looking at somebody in authority, and that's the reason I always wanted our dog ordinance, the leash ordinance, is because if it's not allowable, then it's allowable, and I, that's what I would suggest.
So what do we think, the third?
Third offense.
$200?
Be $200.
Yeah, okay.
It's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
And that might include some warnings, I mean, you got to do it reasonably.
There's only one group of people that you're going to have to deal with, and it's not going to be the students, and it's not going to be the business folks.
That's a practical matter.
Do you see a lot of smoking in the university plaza?
We actually do.
Yes, I can tell you, I...
Not students, I mean, I won't say that there aren't students, but that's not the issue.
Yeah, I agree, I walk, I try to, where I park, I try to walk through the plaza, and in the morning, and in the afternoon, it's heavily used by folks, and it's heavily used for smoking.
I would say particularly, since the weather's gotten warmer, it's probably rare that there's not someone smoking, pardon me, well, in one town, someone's smoking.
I'm just curious on the council, is there anyone who also supports what Mr. Menzner is suggesting, that we look at smoking in all parks? Is there any interest in that on the council?
I'm fine with you bringing it forward.
I thought there was, that there was no smoking in parks.
No, only in certain areas.
Only areas like playgrounds and things like that.
Oh, I don't know, we always stop them at fairgrounds, can't do that.
Okay, well, I mean, that's an issue I think we could bring back to the table, because I do think, you know, there's probably research and data to show that the more prohibitions there are on smoking has increased the amount of people choosing to quit, and there's a certain amount of shame and guilt associated with it, people are more, more likely to take up the cause of quitting. So, thank you very much.
So we'll bring this ordinance back, the university plaza on the 18th.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
So we are up to item number three now on the agenda, new street and pedestrian wayfinding signs. Thank you, folks.
Okay, back on the wayfinding signs, parking issue, this has to do with, with the parking study that was completed in 2012, one of the recommendations in that had to do with, one of the things they recognized was that our parking signs were inconsistent and different color, well, inconsistent in this regard, they were sometimes different colors, and maybe not always placed in the best locations. So their recommendation was... maybe not always placed in the best locations. So their recommendation was to change our parking signs out to something that was more consistent, no matter what the parking situation or parking lots, I'll say. And what staff has done is taken some time, and it took a while to kind of bring this, to put this together, but what we decided to do is put white on blue, and each sign is consistent no matter what the lot is. And the most prominent feature right at the top of each sign is, is the typical P for public parking with a circle emblem around it. We actually reduced the city logo, which seems to be prominent on some signs, simply because what they really wanna see is parking. The idea is to find parking. They'll figure it out, it's the city's lot. What they really need to know is where the parking is at. So, we had signs that were white on brown, brown on white, green on white, white on green, and we're gonna replace all those with, with the white on blue that you see on the attachment. And those are in order, and they actually should be in before the end of June.
Is there any way, when you mount them, to not put them on a sign or post that's 20 feet up in the air so that people can actually see them from their car?
Is there a place or one that's, some of these will be overhead. They'll actually be better overhead as you come up to us. Traffic's just like along here Franklin and Potomac, because you're not really paying, you're watching the lights, you're not so much paying attention to the signs.
I just know that some of the pole-mounted signs tend to be a little higher, where if you're not really paying attention, and then you have trees that grow in front of them, they become-
Some may be because there's other signs below it. And you typically don't want the bottom of the lowest sign to be lower than seven feet. So what happens is, the signs end up getting pushed further to the top. But we can take a look at that and make sure that they're at a comfortable eye level.
Sure.
So, as you can see, that's, that wasn't the final draft, on the final proof from the, there's actually a couple mistakes in that one, but we've corrected those. But that's pretty much what you're gonna see. It's gonna be the name of the lot. So if you're a visitor in town, you'll know which lot you're in and where to find it. And clearly, you know, this blue on white, which will be more visible, I think better visibility this time of year, because right now, there's so much green with the trees, you don't see the green on white or white on green. It kinda disappear into the, into the background. The other que, the other thing we talked about, which isn't shown on this, is still the pedestrian wayfinding signs. Staff is still looking at that, trying to figure out exactly what we wanna do there. We've actually watched a couple webinars on that, and there's major cities that are revamping their wayfinding signs. And what we found is, there's far more options than we ever thought about, even from, does it get lit at night, does it not get lit at night, exactly what do you want to have on there. I've included in here kind of our draft of that. Sheuva Page and Eric has something like this on it. And these are the main areas we've picked. And we'd like you to review that as the city, city center Hagerstown destinations. Not tonight, obviously, we're not looking for any review tonight. But take your time and take a look at that, and then get back with staff if you would, and let us know if these destinations make sense, if there's other destinations that you want on there. We try not to be specific at this time on particular businesses or restaurants, because they can change. And changing the signage can get expensive unless we have some particular type of signage that's easily changeable. But, you know, this isn't the first time we've attempted to do this. The city has, has tried us a number of times, so this is probably the third, fourth, third, fourth time that we've done this over the years. So we're trying to be a little smarter about this time. That's why it's taken a little time to figure out exactly what we wanna do. But we'd like you to review that and let us know if that, if those destinations make sense, if we need to add to them or, or modify in any way.
And your objective is to not just label where they are, but get people to them?
Exactly. The idea is, once you leave the parking lot, let's say you park in the central lot, you walk to the street, do you really know where the Department of Social Services is? Is it down the street? Where's the library? Where is the Maryland Theater? Where is the courthouse? I can tell you just walk around downtown, many times I get approached, and it's like, so where is, you know, there'll be standing in the parking lot just outside this building, go, where's the job center? And I go, well, if you turn around and walk 100 feet, you'll be inside their door. They just don't see it, they don't see the signs. So we like to have some, a number of these wayfinding signs for pedestrians, so when they leave the lot, or walking in the lot, they'll be able to, be able to find it. So.
I think it sounds good. I think this is a great idea. Long overdue, I often say that if I were an alien and just came into Hagerstown for the very first time, would I be able to find my way around? And I think the answer is usually no. I mean, people get confused by the one-way streets and how to find things. I do think, I mean, I know you said you don't wanna, to do specific businesses or restaurants, but with the burgeoning restaurant scene that it seems like we have in downtown, it may be helpful, I think, you know, if you're coming in, especially on Route 40 into town from either direction, to perhaps direct people maybe to the central lot for restaurant parking. Or, or somehow be able to have interchangeable signs, you know, to, to be able to deal with the change, to make it less expensive and easier to do. But to be able to somehow direct people, you know, it'd be nice for people to know, when they're coming into town, this is the place where you can park if you wanna go to El Paso, or the Rhubarb House, or, or-
That'll be specific. We could say Restaurant District, or something like that.
And we may need to look at that. I mean, whether we label something Restaurant Row, or, or something, we wanna give it a name. I think that's all part of, I know, an initiative that's happening in the Department of Community and Economic Development in terms of identifying neighborhoods. And I think we've, we've pretty much just identified another district in downtown, which is the University District. So I like that approach, because it gives some form, and it gives some kind of destination approach. You know, you have the Market District, and people know where that is. You can label it on a map, and people can orient themselves that way. So I think this is all a great initiative, and I think it's just, I think you even said, this is just the start of it, and-
Yeah, it's taken some time. It's taken longer than we anticipated. After we watched these webinars, we were stunned by, I mean, there's more to it than just putting a sign up. I mean, you really gotta think it through, because once you build it, it's done.
Well, again, I think it's easy, we all know where we're going, because we're from here, we've been here for a long time.
Right.
But, you know, again, if you put yourselves in the shoes of someone who's, you know, just traveling through, it's, it's a lot different, and it can, it can be pretty confusing.
But you do have a lot of visitors, like I said, that come down for, for job training, to the courthouse. I mean, this is terrible to admit. I mean, I, I talked to a woman the other day, she seemed kinda lost down at the A and E deck, and, and I said, can I help you? And she was looking for Potomac bead. And she just hadn't been in Hagerstown, and she was probably, I'll say in her 70s. And she found the deck, and, but she couldn't find the bead company. I says, where are you from? She said Chambersburg. She'd never been downtown, had no idea. Somebody at the A and E deck the other day was from Boonsburg, and had no idea where the courthouse was. They were just, they found the deck, and that was good, but from Boonsburg, and never been downtown.
Well, after going around the block a couple times on the one-way streets, people get disoriented, and so you have to kind of point them in the right direction. So I think this is a good start.
And that's the idea, right.
No, I certainly would love to be able to tell my clients, park in the parking deck and just follow the signs to the courthouse. And I'm right across the street. But right now, it's difficult to tell people where to park to get to where they're going, because the very things that are being said here.
But you gotta be careful which courthouse, because one's on Antietam, and one's on Wright, so then you gotta, you know, you gotta differentiate which courthouse you're talking about, right? So.
It's good, it would be great to be able to include commercial business enterprises. The trouble is, you leave people out, no matter what you do. Like, if you do, and you know this, Restaurant Row, well, there's outliers who've invested just as much money, they don't happen to be on that. Some places, as you've studied, and this is pedestrian scale, they'll have lists with arrows, you know. But then you have to keep that up to date all the time, or it gets, you know, it gets old. So it, it's tricky. It's hard to, you know, to say more than Business District, or Entertainment District, or something on a road sign. On a pedestrian sign, you can put a lot.
Right. Right. On a road sign, it has to be short and sweet. You're only gonna see it for a moment, and that's it.
You can make those parking MMs even bigger now.
But, you know, there, you know, like Frederick has, like, the marquee signs, like, we have the historic plaques on, and they have those kinds of things that, you know, have a color-coded map of their downtown. This is the Theater District, this is the, you know, Market Street, Restaurant, Business District. And I think that is, I hope, part of what you're looking at when it comes to the pedestrian wayfinding.
Looking at all that, and I'm sure we'll be back to bring something back before we-
And I'm, I'm just glad that you're doing it, because I think it's, it's long overdue to be, to be looked at.
Well, it's not just me, it's a bunch of us.
I'm sure. The whole team.
The whole team. Any other questions?
Good. Thanks for the initiative.
All right, the next item then on the agenda is the fiscal 2014 workers' comp insurance.
Good afternoon.
Hello, Mr. DeHaven.
How's it going?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Well, the workers' comp is up for renewal beginning July 1st. IWF came back. We have a proposal for $955,622. And at this point, that's, our original plan was to have the broker market the, the coverage, and not enough time for that, so we had to negotiate with IWF going forward.
Congratulations, it's always nice to see you. Insurance costs drop a little bit.
It did, it went down. Primarily, the rates stayed the same. The police rate went up slightly, fire rate went down slightly, clerical rate stayed even. What, what we did this time around, we took the audit that we get each year from the insurance company, and we use that number primarily for all the different rate codes that we have. And that drove by about $444,000, the salary amount down. So, rates are driven by the, by salaries, and that's, that's where the premium's coming from.
So this pertains to the premium, the insurance. The idea that we talked about roughly a month ago, about looking at different brokers, we'll, we'll stick with Keller Stonebreaker to get this in place for this year, come back and talk to Mayor and Council about any interest in changing brokers in the future.
And just, just to let you know, the, the account that's used for the workers' comp fees, which is the premium expense account, spread over General Fund and Enterprise Fund, we also use those funds for the broker fees, comes out of there also.
Any questions or comments from the council?
So what we'd like to do is put this on for the 18th, so you can formally approve the insurance for the, for the coming year.
Right, and then we'll do a review of our procedures.
Yeah, I think we need to revisit, we would still like to go out for proposals on brokers.
They get a bunch of confused people around here.
Yeah, we thought we got some good proposals, but, but let's revisit that.
Yeah, we need to understand them better. I felt like I just don't have any understanding of what was going on.
But we gotta pay this bill.
Yes, absolutely. I know, I'm all ready to yell.
Send it to Bill, Dawn.
Yeah. Good for the next one, it's still.
All right, any other discussion on this item? Thank you. And you're on for the next one, too, the fiscal 2014 liability property insurance with LGIT.
Yes. Local Government Insurance Trust. I believe Council Member Brew Baker had mentioned Legit in the past. Pretty sure you're familiar with, with their work. We're part of a consortium of sorts. As a, as their member, we have benefits that you don't normally get from regular insurance companies. And primarily, a regular insurance company, they're out to make a profit. Legit, on the other hand, they take the money that they get from their members, and it goes either back into the program in training, or it comes back in discounts. And we received over $36,000 in discounts off this premium. And it was actually under budget. We, we looked at all the different coverages, whether it was auto, the property, police liability, public official, and we either added a 3% increase on those individual policies, or we put 4%. Primarily with auto, we, we were up on our, a few of our accidents this past year, so we put 4% towards the auto side.
You're batting two for two.
Yeah, but I just wanna make it clear that if at any times, I have, I wanna do the best deal for the taxpayers and, and not take any particular operation. So, if at any time, staff thinks there's cause that we should go out or handle this differently, you know, it's not, these people are not foreordained, even though they're-
No, no, they're not.
Yeah, so, so I, I, you know, I just wanna make it clear that if, if there are viable proposals, or if you think we should handle this differently, I think we, you know, we need to hear about it. I am not instructing you or telling you in any way, shape, or form to go, you know, with this vendor.
Right, okay. I understand that.
I'm assuming that Legit provides that, that larger packet of, you know, all of the properties you own, they have years, and, you know, year constructed, and things like that. Do they provide that to the city of Hagerstown annually?
I don't know if I follow you, if-
They, for, for the property insurance renewal, they have that evaluation that they provide for the various properties?
Oh, I, I get you. What, what they'll generally do, the la, the last time that we had an outside appraiser come in, Huron's came in, they did all the water tanks, because we had two new water tanks. So they wanted to get the, get that valued. Prior to that, the year before, they came in, they did City Hall, Elizabeth Hager, anything that, that went over, I believe it was a million dollars, we had that reviewed.
So you have somebody, what I'm saying is, you have somebody at the staff level that reviews that comprehensive list to make sure that they've got all the dates and everything?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? So same with this, we'll, we'll put it on for an introduction.
For approval on the 18th.
For approval on the 18th, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the Hagerstown Youth Hockey Association Operating Agreement for the ice rink. Welcome back.
Thank you. This is Travis Poole, who's the counsel to the HYHA, and Ken Rittenberg, who's the president, board president for the HYHA. When they were here in January, during their annual presentation, we indicated that the operating agreement that they have with the city that's been in place for the last five years expires at the end of this month, at the end of June. And so what we have here before us is a, a new operating agreement, written around the old one, but hopefully improved in, in some ways, for your consideration, and hopefully passing at the regular session this month. I think we could all agree that the HYHA has generally successfully ran the rink well over the last five years. And before that, there were various issues that we faced, but the HYHA has worked through a lot of those things. And I think the staff's recommendation is that we continue to have a partnership with them at the rink. Just to highlight some of the things that are in the agreement, and then I'll just throw it open for questions. Basically, the, the building is ours, it's owned by the city of Hagerstown. It's, we're happy to say that it is now, the mortgage is paid off, and it is owned free and clear. There is no other outstanding long-term debts on the building. So the buildings are, so we will maintain the building as far as, you know, if the building itself needs work done to it. That would be part of the agreement, that it would be the city's responsibility. The HYHA would take care of the daily maintenance, wear and tear on the building, if something gets painted, if the flooring needs replaced, those kind of things. The Zamboni that takes care of the ice is their responsibility. They also plan on finishing the locker room project that they've started. And in the agreement, over the next two years, funds that they raise, that they were paying to the city to pay off our long-term debt, now will be used to finish those improvements in the rink itself. And that will, they'll have that done in the next two years. The city, on our, for our part, we will pay the utility bills, as we always have. The city, on our, for our part, we will pay the utility bills, as we always have. And we will come back to you probably next month with a purchase to purchase new lights over the ice. There's about forty-some lights that are twenty years old now and are not very efficient. And by simply replacing them with newer LED lights, we can get a return on that investment of probably less than a year or two, and be able to save ourselves money on electric costs, which is our number-one utility cost out there. After the two years of making the payments that they'll be rolling into the improvements there, then they will be paying the city three thousand dollars, that'd be for the last three years, three thousand a month rent, starting July first, 2015. And it is their hope that we could put that in a designated fund that would accrue, that we can invest back in the rink as the rink ages. So, the money that is raised there would stay there. But that would be ultimately the Mayor and Council's decision. The HYHA is just one of the users of the rink. There's six others, and they're listed in the agreement. And part of their responsibility, and I think it's a rather large one, is try to provide open or fair time to those groups. This agreement speaks more to that than the former agreement actually did. And the idea is that they would look at all of the different demands of the different groups and develop a schedule that best meets the needs of everybody. They've already given us access to that schedule. We can provide that to you at any time that you'd like to see it. But that is also part of their responsibility, is that management of the ice time itself. So, I think that's kind of the highlights of it. I would throw it open to whatever questions you have, or whatever comments, Travis, if you had anything you wanted to say about it.
I don't particularly. I'm here more in case anyone has any questions.
I just have a question. Who are the Hagerstown Honey Badgers?
That was a new adult program that formed a couple of years ago. They're the ones that, they do a lot of fundraising for cancer and cancer research. And they're made up of players who are from the three different levels of adult hockey that we have at the ice rink. And then some are players that come from other rinks that just joined them. They were actually in New Jersey this weekend, or excuse me, up in Atlantic City, playing in a tournament to raise funds.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Mara, I am lucky enough to have been involved with the ice rink since its inception. There were times when one may have not used the term "lucky enough to be involved" since its inception. I can say that now because of this group. I mean, I think clearly for all those who've been involved from the beginning, the ice rink has never, ever operated as smoothly and as appropriately as it has under the guidance of these folks. And I want to thank them and commend them for everything they've done. It is not an easy thing to do. To deal with youth sports at any level is extremely difficult. And some of us, when we were around and had the huge blow-up between hockey and figure skaters, and it was one of the ugliest things the city's seen in years over something as nice as an ice rink, with people saying, "We don't deserve as a city to even have one. They don't want to come here anymore." And these folks have done just a superb job. They're making a profit. They're putting it back into the ice rink, and we don't have complaints. So, I strongly support this.
It really is a great destination for people. I know people come from far and wide for hockey games and tournaments and whatnot, so.
Yeah, there's a player who comes from far and wide.
Indeed.
Do we still have figure skating? Do we still have figure skating?
Oh, yes, they actually have a show this weekend.
Do they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and the public skating, the open public skating, how often is that?
Um, there are four on the schedule right now. And so, one Friday night, two on Saturday, and one on Sunday. And we also have one on Monday for, like, homeschool. And people who want to come and enjoy it. And sometimes we have a Schools Out skate program that we introduced two years ago, and we will be doing that again this year. It'll be our third year.
Marty.
I guess I have some questions. And Rodney, I've talked to you about this, and I've talked to some people, some users of the rink about this. And I guess it revolves around, on page five, section five F, which, as my understanding, now, this isn't marked up, so I can tell. I can't see what the former language was. But that is a section that was changed substantially. It wasn't, there formerly was an advisory group composed of all the users. Is that not correct that this proposal eliminates?
Well, the agreement that I have basically says that the HYHA will manage the rink, and the users are as follows, and it listed out several.
Right.
None of the language after that was included in the old agreement about trying to give them.
But was there not an advisory group that?
It still exists. There is an advisory, group's probably a good word for it, that has a representative from each of the users, at least that's its intention, so that it can bring issues before the HYHA board, which is responsible for operation of the rink.
Right.
That group does not have to necessarily be together for scheduling to occur. The intention of this provision is that the HYHA sit down with each, or at least consult with each group individually about ice time and scheduling on a six-month.
So, Rodney, what you're saying is the group's remunerated, but the group is not part of the contract. Is that correct?
It's correct. This is just one, HYHA.
No, the former contract.
There's nothing in the former contract.
That's right.
Yeah.
I said, this, I do like to get things that are marked up, so I can see, you know, the changes, you know, like the legislation, so we can, the contract especially. But so, I'm trying to get at, how is that handled? The groups come in individually when you change the schedule, but in the end, it's up to the youth hockey group to determine the times?
Yep.
And how do you do that? I mean, do you just sort of make a judgment call? Do you look at how much usage there is, how much they're funding? Are they paying you for the time?
Well, what we have to do first is because HYHA is the largest user group, we have over seven travel teams, so we're responsible to the Capital Beltway Hockey League in order to be able to schedule. And they say that we cannot play any games during the week. We can only play games at certain times on Saturday and Sunday. We have to look at the North Stars, who are part of the Maryland Scholastic Hockey League, who have to play by a set of rules, can't play on the weekends, and can only play on the weekdays. We have to take all those into consideration. When we're working with the public, it's important to have a steady, consistent, repeatable schedule. So, all those stay in the same slots year after year, so people know to do their scheduling with their kids. Some people schedule their kids six and seven months in advance for events and programs. So, all those have to go into place. Public skate doesn't move, so those go into place. After all those go into place, then the adult hockey programs, any extra things the figure skaters would like to do, all those go into place. Once HYHA's schedule is done, which is not until August, and we cannot release any ice until November, because teams can shift schedules, which can cause us to have to shift our schedule, HYHA does release half of their game slots for other events that the other groups may be interested in using. Once the season is over in February, even though HYHA pays for its ice slots year-round, which is over fifteen ice slots that we pay for, we release all of them back to the rink.
Do these, again, do these other groups, do they pay you? How does that work?
We actually do all the registrations, so all the fees come through the main bank account, and then they're divided out to, they're divided out to the groups, because referees have to be paid for their games, and things like that have to be taken care of.
So, roughly, what proportion is adult, for adult hockey beyond the youth?
There's three different levels of adult. And two of them are under the rink, and one decided to separate this year. So, they have six teams.
You've been running it how long?
Six years.
Six years.
One year under probation, six, five years under contract.
You've either broken even or made money all those years?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. How many visitors to the rink do you get in a year?
Uh, we provided all that in January. I didn't bring that.
I'm sorry.
We provided all that information in January, when we gave our annual report, and I didn't bring a copy with me.
I can get that to you, Councilman.
You don't remember that number?
Not off the top of my head, no. I just got finished doing tryouts for hockey teams and stuff, so my brain's a little fraught.
Thank you.
Here's a representative of one of the other user groups. Would it be, would the Council agree to hear from that representative?
I don't have a problem with that from anybody.
Yeah, since he was here from the beginning anyway.
He was here from the very, back in the, back in the day.
Back in the day.
Yeah.
I'm Paul Sweeney. I was involved in 2007 when all this started. Penny remembers me from being at some of the meetings prior to what happened. And Penny, if you remember, when we were sitting in a lot of those meetings before the group took over, we could see what was going on. It was pretty nasty. So, when we took over, it was a pretty daunting task. We were kind of concerned about taking over. And the city's big concern at that time was that they were very much concerned. They didn't want one user group to dominate the other user groups. If you remember at that timeframe, there was a lot going on with the figure skaters. There'd been some protesting going on, and it was just, it was just a really ugly situation. So, the city asked us to make sure that that didn't happen. And that's why we formed what we call the Rink User Board, okay? And the Rink User Board was not an advisory board. The Rink User Board was the board that ran the rink. Kim Rodenberg was not on that board in the initial time. Okay, so she's coming in later, and she's kind of interpreting it a much different way, okay? The Rink User Board made all the decisions. HYHA had their own separate meetings. Let me show you right here. These are the minutes from the HYHA meetings. You can look through these. There is no discussion of how the rink is going to be operated. These are the minutes from the HI-SC Rink Board meeting, which operated and ran the rink, okay? Now, what's happened, and I actually have three of the user groups here that are very, very frustrated, because the Rink Board meetings have been scheduled every single month for the last five years. There have been sixty Rink Board meetings scheduled. The meetings have been canceled on a regular basis, usually the day of the meeting. Okay, the last meeting, since the beginning of this year, there were five meetings scheduled, January, February, March, April, and May. We had one meeting in March. And during that meeting, there was discussion about the user group agreement that was coming up. We have asked Ms. Rodenberg consistently for input in that, and we've just been basically ignored. We haven't gotten any kind of, you know, any kind of conversation about it whatsoever. We've got Jamie Blackwood, who's from the North Stars back here. If you want to ask him questions, you're more than welcome to do that. Jesse Wisniews is one of the commissioners on the HAHL, which is an adult hockey league, and we're just not getting any communication. And the user group, you know, is supposed to be involved with schedule. She just said that they set the schedule up after HYHA sets up their schedule. We have no idea what our schedule was like. We've asked her for two months when our scheduled times are going to be, and we don't know. Okay? I don't, the majority of that, I mean, HYHA has done a very, very good job in managing the rink. I agree with everything Mr. Metzner just said. Okay, they've turned the rink around. It's very, very profitable. But it was not HYHA alone. It was all the user groups that were involved with that. And I resent the fact that they're sitting here, taking credit for the whole thing, and ignoring us, and basically saying that they've run it since the beginning. We've been running the rink. We've been running the rink, not HYHA. The user groups have been running the rink. And the way that agreement is set up is basically going to say that HYHA can do whatever they want. They could come to us, as I'm a member of the adult league, we currently play five-thirty, seven, and eight-thirty on Sunday nights. They could come to us and say, "Hey, guess what? You're playing on Tuesday and Thursday nights at twelve o'clock midnight." And what could we do about it? There's no recourse in that agreement for that. Absolutely not. Do you want that?
There was no recourse in the agreement.
Yes, there was, because we had the Rink Board. The Rink Board would decide. The Rink Board was the ones that scheduled all the, all the times.
The Rink Board is not the contracting party with the city.
I understand that.
Well, no, I don't think you do.
Yes, I do.
If you did, then you'd understand that, at the end of the day, HYHA has a responsibility to the City of Hagerstown, okay? And so, it has to do the best it can. That means it can't have a board with people who aren't contracting with the city to operate the rink.
We've already done that.
It would be like, it would be like the city operating the rink and asking a citizen to actually manage it.
We've already done that.
Without any agreement in place.
You want to look through the minutes?
I have it.
And you want to see?
Yes, this is not, this is now not what this council's about. We're, we're to work session, not for a debate between third parties.
Well, I guess my question for Mr. Sweeney is, what do you want?
We want input on the schedules. I mean, we, if you want to look, there's a copy. I'll give it to each one of you. We want section five F, word of difference.
And I would say, before he hands it out, that I think there's legitimate issues with that as well, since youth hockey has responsibility for a lot of the operation of, under this contract. But I think there might be some ways to find to give them more input. I'm not sure what those are. But I think, I do agree that it's up to youth hockey. The way I read it, the city can recommend to them, but they still are the ultimate deciders.
Well, it says.
Can I say something?
Well, let me just be clear, because it, what section F says, after it lists the user groups, it says HYHA shall meet every six months with each of the above user groups and with the City of Hagerstown to determine rink time needs, or groups or programs, and to develop a schedule of use times that fairly meets the needs thereof, to the extent reasonably practicable. So, that's the current language.
Can I say something else? That language was not in there until about two or three days ago.
Okay, but that's just what it says now.
I know.
The, let me comment on this. There's been several.
May I suggest?
Councilmember.
This body start having discussion about it now. Okay, I really, if we're going to have a work session for this body to discuss it, then we should do that. If we want staff to come in with some other recommendations, because we're all confused now, we should send staff back to talk with attorneys and other people. But I got to tell you, if you want to have an agreement with a party, giving them authority to run a rink, and then you enter into a contract telling them that the only control they don't have is scheduling, how do you run a rink when you have removed the entire, this paragraph just completely says you run the rink, but you have no power in scheduling? And if, if.
And that's why I say, that goes too far.
And if staff, if staff is seeing difficulties here, and the Council's seeing difficulties here, and there's user groups that aren't happy, then I think staff needs to meet with everybody and come back and say, geez, either we met with everybody, and we continue to believe this is the best way to do it, or we think some changes need to be made. I am frustrated, because this agreement's been in effect for five years, and this is the first time that I'm aware of that this body is suddenly having complaints from user groups that they're not having access to the rink. Now, maybe it's been made, but at hand, nobody's come to this body.
It's all happened in the last six months.
Okay. And so, has staff been notified of that?
We've tried to, but the meetings have been canceled. Every time we've.
I'm talking about city staff.
No, he's talking city staff.
Well, yes. I contacted Rodney August of last year, when I, when I started having some problems. And we followed that conversation.
Right.
Okay, so, yes.
I, you know, I certainly think that this agreement should reflect something that says if there's things that are done that are unreasonable or unfair, that we have a right to address that. But I don't think you can make an agreement to have somebody run someplace and then remove from them the authority to schedule activities. And so, maybe there's an in-between.
On the other hand, I don't think you can have six user groups and then, you know, have, it's a community ice rink, and then really have no way, even we can't. The way I read this, there's not, they can meet with us, but they determine. We're determined.
And I have no problems with having language.
And so, maybe there's something a little in-between. I realize there are practical difficulties. So, I guess I would like to.
And I would suggest that we have staff work on that.
Bring it back.
Or if it's a, if there's an advisory group, at least, they can have meetings and it's public. It's not, he said, she said. They go to them, and they say something. It's he said, she said. Whereas, if you have a group meeting, then I think that works better.
I would certainly suggest that staff, understanding what the issues are, get back together. And I think ultimately, there has to be something in this agreement to give us the ultimate authority to make decisions if disputes arise, or some method. But I just don't think this is the forum to be, you have four different user groups here, and Council, and staff, and we can get into this debate, and we'll be here for the next two hours. I don't think that's the way we're planning on running government.
I would tend to agree with you, and I think that. I would tend to agree with you, and I think that, that if we want to have staff mediate between these various user groups and come back with another proposal, considering all of the, the information, then I think that is the best course. But I agree with Mr. Metzner that this is not the forum to hold a debate about who's getting what and what is not being gotten. So I think. Go ahead. No, please. It, it's just odd to me because we, we sat here and heard how bad the rink was, and I was on the board when it was bad, and there were eight different groups arguing for the prime time and losing money because of a lack of efficiency of programming at that time. And we hear how it's been going so great for the last five years, and we're about to approve an agreement that's different from an agreement that has been in existence for the last five years and has worked so great. So for me, I just don't see the necessity to, to, to change something that's working well, any section. Any more than, any, any more in terms of whether I want one single group changing it to the degree which they have some type of, of increased ultimate authority, any more than I want to return to the days of where eight different entities have this equal level of authority. It's clear that neither of those are, are workable solutions, so why change the solution that's been working at all? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. Is that what I hear?
Yeah.
That's, that's my point exactly. But what, what you don't see in the original agreement is the board that we formed. This wasn't something that was formed.
And I'm not interested in putting that in.
Well, I'm just telling you, that was, that was the reason why, that's the reason why it worked, because there was a Rink User Group Board. It wasn't eight different entities making decisions independently. It was eight different entities making decisions collectively.
Well, I think, let me have Rodney respond, and then I think what we should do is have, as Mr. Brubaker suggested, a markup of what, if there are changes, let's have the original agreement or what's been in place with the changes noted so that it's clear to the council members what has been changed or what hasn't been changed. I think that would be appropriate. But did, did you want to say something? Because I know.
Well, yeah, we can definitely do that. I mean, I don't see in the old agreement where it talks about an advisory board. The old agreement was with the HYHA. But all that said.
Let's see what the old agreement says. We don't have it here. It'd make us, it'd make it a lot easier for us to read it.
Please. We need to have you have a mic. Is there a mic?
No problem. I can speak up.
It's for the folks at home.
No problem. I wasn't there. Actually, I was there when they put the chains on the door. I was on my way home from Alabama with an eight-year-old in the backseat who was getting ready to step out on the ice for the first time to play hockey. And I was looking at the possibility of telling him he would never play hockey, because there was no way that my husband and I could ever take him to Frederick to play hockey. So my husband and I stepped up to the plate, along with many families, to make this work. And I was not on the board the probation year. But I was on the board, courtesy of Mr. Sweeney, the next year as a Vice President of Administration, as the person who would take pla, take the president's place if he should leave, and he did three years later. We have done nothing but try to take care of all the user groups. And to that end, we eat our own dog food, because HYHA gave up three premium slots two years ago to grow the youth hockey, which is the basic hockey skills, the pond hockey, and the learn-to-play, as well as gave a slot, premium slot, to the adult hockey league, and it took on two 7:00 AM slots that nobody wanted. We had to turn teams out last year and pay for ice in order to meet our obligation to the Chesapeake Bay Hockey League. So we have done everything we have been asked to do.
When I think, again, it's, it sounds like there's a, a lot behind this that perhaps we, we don't have information on. But what I think is important to note is that there is such a demand for this ice. And I think that's an important thing to be noted, that, that it is an amenity that has turned out to be quite beneficial for the community at large. And like I said earlier, does bring in a lot of people from many different regions of the four state to Hagerstown for that specific use. And I think that's quite remarkable. I do think that there is a way to mediate this conflict and make sure that everybody can be satisfied with, with the arrangement. But I think at this point, we'll, we'll move on in our agenda to the next item so that we can let staff work things out and bring this issue back to us.
I have a question for Rodney. What is it in utilities that the city pays for the ice rink?
It runs between thirty and thirty-five thousand a year.
A year.
Hoping that that goes down when the lights are changed out to more energy-efficient ones.
You said it would bring a one-year return on investment.
I think, I think I figure like eighteen months, something like that. It's, it's excellent. It's a good investment.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
At this point, we have the proposed sale of eleven, twelve, fifteen, and sixteen Public Square.
Good evening.
Hello.
We bring to you tonight a request for an action for the mayor and council to approve to proceed with the sale of eleven, twelve, fifteen, and sixteen Public Square to a developer recommended after staffer's review. As directed by the mayor and council, staff have developed and implemented this competitive negotiated sale process with the goal to return city-owned property where feasible to private hands. Staff believes that this property is feasible to return to private hands. The committee reviewed two proposals from two upstanding business groups. One proposal had many contingencies. The other did not. Staff asked for, of one of the applicants for a proposal without contingencies and a new offer price. And from the other proposal, we asked for a new offer price. The results are outlined on page two of the memo that you have. In Proposal One, the city subdivides and then sells the property. In Proposal Two, or Proposal B, I should say, the city subdivides and then waits for financing to be arranged, and then waits for a new ten-year lease to be obtained with the CVB. So with that in mind, the staff recommends that Proposal A, B be accepted to move forward towards a purchase agreement. There are a couple of other things to consider on this property. If, if the city were to retain the property and then attempt to lease it ourselves, there's, there's significant money. There's about twelve, there's painting and flooring that needs to be done. There's some other deferred maintenance on the property that needs to be handled before it were to be leased properly. And, and we hope that, we hope to, to bring this to conclusion if possible.
The, if I can just add, the difference between the, the property or the proposals in terms of the net offer price is a very small amount. But as Andrew had said, the major difference is Proposal A is a cash deal. So once the city has the property subdivided, we'd be able to go to settlement. And the other has the contingencies, which may or may not, may or may not come to fruition. The reason why staff believe it's, it's feasible to sell this, this section of the Elizabeth Hager Center, it's no longer used for, for city offices. Two-thirds of the building is vacant. Currently, the income or the net income at the, the property is about nine thousand and some change. I spoke with Councilmember Elshaw earlier today, and I misspoke. I said it was six thousand and some change. It's actually nine, nine thousand and some change. The suite 200 and 300, it's the second floor where the Civil War Preservation Trust used to be, that's, that's currently all vacant space. And the third floor, where the inspectors used to be housed, that's all vacant space.
I like, this, this process, it's taken a little while to develop this process. But I think that what we've attracted here are two, is what we set out to do. We, we attracted two really solid proposals for this property. And, and I think that by showing this clear process and, and finalizing it and, and showing what we can, what we can glean from, from the private sector as far as proposals, this has been a successful process so far. And we, you know, just looking for, for some direction here.
Comments, questions?
I'm all in favor. I have one question. You had come to us at some time with a proposal to purchase this property for a certain price. Is this price the same, less than, more than the original proposal?
It's, it's less than. And the initial proposal is Proposal B. That's the one that had come forward last fall.
So that proposal also had contingencies and the guarantees that A has?
Correct. And some of the contingencies have disappeared. Some have remained. There were more contingencies. But the, the initial offer price was higher, so Proposal B has lowered their offer price over time.
And taken some of the contingencies off the table.
Taken some of the, yes.
That's the.
Yeah, I was right, Lou.
Andrew, could you explain the process again? This is a new process. How you obtained proposals and then at what point they had to be cut off?
Sure. We, we advertised the properties for sale. This was all instigated because there was, a developer came forward and said, you know, we're interested in buying the city-owned property. And that's when we came to mayor and council and, and got direction on, on to develop a process whereby any city-owned property could be, we could accept proposals on, and we, then, then the mayor and council would make decisions on what to do with them with some sack recommendations and the staff vetting the, the developers out a little bit. So, so we, we accepted, so we opened this property up for, for, for other proposals. And advertising and newspaper has been listed on the website for a number of months now, frankly. And, and during that process, we got another proposal in about, on the, on the property. And like I said before, we, they weren't really apples-to-apples proposals. So in, in trying to get apples-to-apples, we, I went, we went back and said, let's take, try to take these contingencies off the table, adjust your price without those contingencies, and then other, you know, Proposal A, adjust your price also. And give us, give us what you think the property is worth to you. Those proposals came back in, and that's what we have decided from. And that's, and that's, in the end, that is what's outlined on Attachment A. That is the, that is as close to apples-to-apples as we could get.
And, and by, by we, it's important to understand that for, for the public to know, there's a, a staff committee that reviews the proposals. And if you want to cover who, who's on the committee.
The staff committee is the, the planning director, the finance director, the community development manager, the code inspections manager, and myself, the downtown manager. We have, we represent a lot of the different experience on, on staff. This is the same committee that looks at pet proposals. And we're well-versed, and everyone looks at it from different aspects and brings up their own, their own concerns, and we talk through it.
Andrew, A and B are the last and best offers, right?
That is, that, yes. Yeah, I mean, we, we, you could, you could go back and forth for, for months, asking for the last of them, the last and best.
At some point, you got to stop.
Yeah.
But the key question is, were the applicants informed that it was the high, that this was to be the highest and best offer?
They were told to adjust their offer prices or bring them in and bring in their, bring in and resubmit their proposals.
As the highest and their highest and best?
As the, as their final proposal.
As their final proposal.
Best and final.
Best and final. I don't think, I mean, those words were probably not, best and final were not used. I don't know if that's a legal definition. But adjust your prices and submit your proposals again, and we're going to decide.
Let me just say, from my point of view, I intend to support A because it makes sense, I think, and here to support A. However, I think the city of Hagerstown finds itself in a very interesting and unusual situation in that two developers are kind of fighting over the same property. I mean, that's nice to have, and we got to encourage that. So somebody's going to be happy, somebody's going to be disappointed, and we've got to make sure, as to the best of our ability, to make, to make certain that the disappointed individual stays interested in downtown.
I agree with you. And in, in every situation, there's going to be a disappointed, or maybe more than one disappointed individual or group. It's.
Well, but we, but what Don's saying is, in this particular case, this was the originator, so.
That's correct.
And it's somebody who I think would be a valuable contributor. It's hard to make a choice. It's one of those difficult decisions. And, and I do think we probably ought to be sure we have the exact right words when we ask for the final proposals. You know, I'm not saying we did or didn't. I don't know. But we, we need to be absolutely clear, this is it, guys. Unless we intend it. You know, if we intend to come back and say, well, tweak this here, then we can't say that, so.
And I agree with Mr. Munson that it is important to, to take the, the, the folks who offered Proposal B and try to point them. And I mean, I'm sure you will be doing that, Andrew, with finding other ways, that if they have a vision for what they want to achieve and it's, and they are looking at downtown, that we can help them find that space, whether it's city-owned or not, to be able to achieve the vision that they have for what they want to accomplish. To bring twenty full-time and six part-time jobs, I think, you know, that's, you're always doing that. And I think, I just wanted to reemphasize that.
And, and we will reach out. If ultimately the direction is to get, to work towards a contract following Proposal A, we will work with the folks on Proposal B. And later on, the next agenda item is the Invest Hagerstown program. And if given the green light on, on that, then that, that may assist in, in working with a privately-held property to bring, bring something good about from, from, from a developer who's expressed interest in the downtown.
And I think the, could you explain the, the, for Proposal A, the additional benefits? The free space in the office, the, the six months, the equity loan program. Can you talk more about that and what that is?
Sure. That was, part of the, part of the application for this asks for, for, just to kind of flesh out your vision a little bit for the property. And the additional benefit to the downtown economy in general, the, the, the Proposal A applicant was willing to provide some free office space for, for startup businesses, some free consulting kind of services for startup businesses here in the downtown. And he's offered to partner with the city on an equity and loan program to bring more entrepreneurs downtown. He's got, he's got some, he's got some, some, some additional thoughts on what he could bring in his experience to the downtown.
And we have not flushed that concept out.
No.
It's a concept that he's mentioned. I think he, he's mentioned it to members of this body, and staff would have to meet with him to learn more about what it is he's proposing.
It is intriguing, I have to say.
It is. It's, he's got some thoughts, and we'd love, you know, that's great. We'd love to hear it. We'll, we'll, we'll listen. At the same time, he does, he does say it'll take him, he expects it to take him about six months to fully occupy the building. He, he says that his, he's going to, he put about $12,500 directly into the property to, to, to get it up to leasing. It's what I talked about, basically, what the flooring and paint, some things that need to be done on the building. And, and he thinks that's going to take about six months to do. But in the meantime, he's going to be leasing it.
Ms. Nye or?
What is this property on our books? What is, what does it show for, as far as the value?
It depends on, on what value you're looking at.
Well, knowing that, knowing that honestly, we are seeing a trend and it's happening, that prices are going up. This building is in no way compared to some of the buildings that are so delinquent in a lot of things. I just, I hate to see now that with this building, why we would go with this amount when, I don't care if it would take a year, that I see that there would be more money that would be offered. It's tar, it's starting to turn around. I mean, that's me. That is not anyone else here. But I have a problem in saying, okay, because the first one that came in, that basically it was because of a proposal of a stadium. And I know that from someone else. Now, you know, with this other one, having a clue. But I just, I, I don't know, you know? Things are starting to turn around, and I just, you know, so the amount.
There's a couple amounts. There, there's an assessed value. And like many of the downtown properties, the assessed value is quite high. The assessed value is $1.2 million and some change. The appraised value, based upon a sales comparison approach, is about $500,000.
Right.
And that's, that's looking at property sales over the course of the last decade.
Correct.
Based upon an income approach, even if the vacant spaces were to be occupied, with prevailing rents downtown being anywhere from $4 to maybe $14. So even if you land in the $9 per square foot range, the value of this property, simply based upon income, not if, if they, and I don't think either developer would be buying this if they weren't putting their own offices there for, for these prices. Not if, if they, and, and I don't think either developer would be buying this if they weren't putting their own offices there, um, for, for, for these prices. Because strictly based on income, you're probably in the, the 180-ish to 220-ish range. Based solely on the income that's able to be produced from the properties now. The fact that the properties are two-thirds vacant, it makes it all the more difficult to speculate on an income valuation, how much that property's worth. And, and it all comes down to the likelihood of being able to put income-producing tenants in there.
Well, knowing that this is just the first part of the city actually going out saying, okay, you know what? We have properties for sale, I just, I can't, I just can't go with it.
Well, I, I think we need to move, I think it, it, it is unfortunate that we're at a down cycle in our valuation.
It is, and like I said it Marty, it would only be me anyway, but that's my opinion.
But we'll be getting tax money. And more critically, I think, if, if we get a entrepreneur making a success of it, we need positive examples. And I think that's, that's most important.
So I hear you saying.
And that's an intangible value.
You support A?
Yeah. Kristen and Mr. Arthur, yeah.
The, the, I'm sorry.
I just gonna make this point. We get a lot of heat every time we buy a building. Here, we have an opportunity to sell it and make some money for the city. I think those people who are providing the heat to us really ought to be applauding this one.
The, uh, the, the last thing that, that, from a staff perspective that I would ask, in previous conversations with this body, we discussed, uh, if we were to sell a property, we would earmark those funds to perhaps go into another project.
Absolutely.
And, um...
Along with the money from the, um, the Army, I think, it should be in the same place.
And, uh, so, so we'll, we'll be looking to budget that. We'll come back to you, uh, about our other projects, whether it's 4353 or the Midtown. And, uh, and be looking to incorporate these funds into those project budgets, so then we can get those properties back to private hands.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
And I guess you'll be sticking around for the next agenda item. The update on Invest Hagerstown.
Let me, uh, wait a minute, let me make one point on the previous one. I hope Penny's right. I hope things are coming back. But I have to tell you, I talked to a local businessman this morning, a man that you all know. Maybe a man that you all love, I don't know. But he's getting ready to lay off 30 people because he can't find work for them. So maybe things are coming back, but maybe they're not and...
Properties are. I mean, I'm, you know, I'm seeing it, that's what I stated the other week. And again, it's just how you, how you play it. If we're going into this and just like with the Money Johns putting it, okay, we're putting it over here for whatever else. So are we gonna turn around and say, okay, you know what? We have now two, because we've already gotten two buildings. Are we gonna turn around and say, mm, okay, well now how about if we go and we go ahead and get these buildings as well? And, uh, you know, I, all of this just, it just kind of bothers me.
But there is an argument to be made, that some people do make, that we should go ahead and, and purchase more property and tear down buildings and, and make them pad-ready. And so, I mean, there are...
Well, tearing down buildings is not my thing. But what I'm saying is, this is a building that is not a building that is in harm's way. It is not a dilapidated building, okay? So, and again, you know, it's, it's my opinion. And when you're saying about an entrepreneur, well, you know, I, there's, there's another entrepreneur that came in here and has got so many properties. And I pray to God that this one here has got all of it if he so chooses to go after more. Because I hope that we are not certainly faced with the same thing as what we're faced with another one.
Well, I don't think that's the case.
And we could lose our tail. It all depends on financial, the whole way around.
Well, this guy is paying cash.
I did, that, that's Dave, but it doesn't matter. I, you know, I'm just stating.
Cash is king, still.
I am just stating a fact, okay?
I, I'm, I hear you.
The other entrepreneur is still here.
But he didn't pay cash.
We're suffering through it, doesn't matter.
Sorry, I apologize. I just wanna make the point that you can't buy many properties on unemployment.
Yeah. Take it away, Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. We wanted to take this opportunity to update the Mayor and Council on the Invest Hagerstown grant programs. Uh, we had speak, uh, spoke about these programs on the, uh, I guess during the work session on May 7th. And, uh, we wanted to, uh, update the Mayor and Council on our, uh, our interaction and feedback from developers and homeowners. But, uh, tonight, uh, our goal is to get a nod from the Mayor and Council to, uh, begin program implementation of the Invest Hagerstown grant programs, uh, in fiscal year 2014. And we are seeking direction from the Mayor and Council on the source of funding. And with that said, uh, we wanted to take a, a quick step back, do a, a refresher on, uh, the grant programs, uh, through the Invest Hagerstown program. And, uh, and update you on the feedback received.
So after our discussion, uh, on May 7th, we, uh, the Mayor and Council discussed having a range for the grants. And so staff has put in a range for the, for the large, uh, for the, for the first third grants of between 150 and 250,000 dollars. That allows a little bit more flexible, flexibility in the, uh, in the grants. Then also the Mayor and Council discussed that the large grant should be reviewed by the Mayor and Council. So, uh, staff has, has put into the process that, uh, that, uh, that all first-third city center grants, uh, shall be first reviewed by staff and then finally reviewed and approved by the Mayor and Council. Those are, those are the larger grants. The citywide grants will still be reviewed, uh, and approved by staff. Those, uh, up to 50,000 dollars. But everything over that would be reviewed by Mayor and Council in the first thirds. We did reach out, uh, as directed by Mayor and Council to some local developers, uh, and also some local bankers. Feedback from them has been, uh, and regional, I should say also, uh, but feedback has been positive. Private developers and bankers both agree that this type of grant program will make large projects more economically feasible. Part of the challenges for downtown specifically development has been acquiring your financing, acquiring the capital. But knowing that there is a large commitment, a grant commitment behind you when you go for financing, well, that will reduce that, lower that barrier to, uh, to acquiring your financing. One other interesting piece of feedback that we got though was, uh, kind of the, the PR value of this program. This is gonna attach, uh, attract certainly regional, if not a larger attention. It was, uh, I, I got some feedback from, from somebody here who was, uh, who has been put, uh, done some county and center programs. Some county and center programs at a small, a slightly smaller scale attracted much larger attention. So we have an opportunity here to, to focus some eyes on, on Hagerstown and, and that would be a positive thing.
We also received feedback on the residential grants, the neighborhood owner-occupied grants. Uh, we spoke with some individual homeowners. We presented the concept to our Neighborhood's First Leadership Team. We also, um, reached out to Bill Matthew. He works for the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. He's the acting supervisor for Washington County. We discussed renovations, uh, and rehabilitation, uh, that would help improve marketability of properties, uh, help our assessable base. And we narrowed down a list of the type of renovations that we would be looking for, for the neighborhood owner-occupied grants. Trying to combine, uh, you know, our curb appeal and/or, you know, something that would help our, our assessable, uh, property values. And this type of program with the owner-occupied grants for residential properties, it would plug a gap that we really haven't seen, or really we haven't had that before, uh, as a city program. We have, uh, programs, uh, been, uh, in community development now for about two and a half years. We have programs that, uh, typically are for our low to moderate-income citizens or income-restricted. This type of program would have no income restrictions. It would be citywide, uh, so it would kind of fill that void of, of maybe some folks who don't quite meet the income restrictions. But, uh, these types of homeowners are on that, that brink of not really be able to obtain financing for, for much-needed repairs. And, and repairs that would, you know, impact the quality of life of, of their individual property and also, uh, uh, impact, uh, the neighborhoods. And I can't count on, 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 you know, how many homeowners we've, we've discussed with in the past. I was in the code enforcement, code administration office for roughly eight years. And you run into so many cases where you'd have a homeowner that, that would be willing to, to make these repairs, but the financing just was not there. And, uh, this type of program, I think, would really help fill that void for something that we, uh, that we need. And with that said, uh, we're also seeking direction from Mayor and Council on the source of funding for the program. The May 7th work session, we had discussed, uh, the, the budget, which had 1.5 million, uh, dollars set aside in the CIP fund, uh, for, uh, for this program or potentially for this program. It's been discussed since then that, uh, we could potentially use our reserve funding for this. I believe we, we've discussed that, uh, in the past few weeks and we've run that by the city administrator. And we could potentially use our reserve funding to fund the 1.5 million in fiscal year 2014. And, uh, we would still maintain our, our 20% of reserves. And Bruce, I don't know if you want to elaborate on that any?
Well, just viewing this as one-time project.
Yes.
Consistent with the mayor, what Mayor and Council have talked before, like with the use of the revenue from the sale of the Army Reserve Building. Saw this as an appropriate use of general fund reserve. It would keep us at a very appropriate level, uh, even if we did use the 1.5. We're investing in buildings. We're trying to invest in improving the tax base, so it seemed like a good fit.
And it would be important to note that the funding, especially for the larger city-center-type grant projects, we were looking at 150,000 to 250,000 dollars in grants. Those projects would likely take at least 12 to 18 months to complete, if not up to 24 months. So it wouldn't be, uh, uh, that those grants and those projects would be hitting our reserves right away at the beginning of the fiscal year. I think the, the likely scenario you would see is the residential grants would probably be, uh, hot off the plate, I guess you could say. And, and most of those smaller-type renovation projects through the residential, uh, grant program would be, would be, uh, highly sought-after. And those types of renovations would be more feasible to carry out in a short period of time. So you're likely looking at maybe, uh, 750,000 dollars in funding over the first six to 12 months, uh, being taken from the reserves. And, and as we see the city center grants and the, uh, the citywide commercial grants, it would be the smaller, uh, commercial-type grants. Those would likely be 12 to 18 months before they would be, uh, be, uh, coming to fruition.
And what, excuse me, what, I guess what we envisioned too was that if, if Mayor and Council moved forward with this, it would be a 1.5 million dollar program. We would need to come back for authorization for any additional funding. That was part of the consideration of the reserve. And, and you've got it in your memo, I don't think you've said it verbally, that, that the two commercial building programs would be two-for-one, uh, matching grants. So if you, if you were to get 150,000 from the city, uh, as a, as a grant, you'd need to invest 300,000 as the, uh, the investor.
Correct.
On the residential program, it's a 20% match.
I just have a question about the neighborhood owner-occupied grants because, um, recently John and Andrew and I met with the real estate, uh, at a real estate roundtable with, uh, folks from the Penmar. One of the comments that, uh, I recall at that, in that discussion and talking about, uh, the idea of, of these, these grants is that, that, uh, the money being used for owner-occupied, uh, grants for residences mainly, uh, that those, uh, uses of those funds for deferred maintenance would not increase the assessable base, wouldn't have an, an impact.
Won't have any, any impact at all.
So is, is that, what, cause I noted that you, and you said that you met with the supervisor of assessments. What, what was the feedback that you got in terms of what will create that kind of effect? I would imagine if you're adding a bathroom, that, that might actually do something. But in terms of replacing your roof, they're pretty much saying that that's deferred maintenance.
Updating your kitchen. I mean, the assessor never looks in your kitchen, does he? They don't go inside your house.
Yeah, that's why this is a mix of also curb appeal-type improvements and, uh, assessable base-type improvements. My conversation with Bill Matthew, um, you know, he also used the word marketability a lot as well. Uh, so some of these types of, uh, improvements, you know, the one he hit on was kitchen upgrades, kitchen updates. A lot of people walk into an older home with the older kitchen. One of the first things they see is, is the kitchen updated. Or one of the first things they ask is the kitchen, is, is it updated? And of course, you know, it all depends on the individual situation of the property. Putting a new roof on's not gonna do much if the, the rest of the home is, is not made.
What this question become is when, when do taxpayer dollars start being handed out essentially randomly? Because you're right, I mean, my kitchen certainly needs updated, it's 1950s.
I need a new roof.
And, and, and if we're not gonna have any income limitations at all.
I don't qualify.
We're not gonna have any income limitations, then we've immediately said, we're gonna give it to one group of people on an income basis. And that's the group of people that it can afford a 20% match, okay? So the people who can't afford to do anything can't get it. And, and I just, I have a great deal of difficulty understanding how this is the best use of 300,000 dollars. Uh, I'll give you an example when we talk about downtown renovation. You know, I, I had the opportunity to see some apartments downtown, uh, last week. One of the landlords took me to his apartment on Antietam Street. They were really nice apartments. I mean, very nice. There is absolutely nothing that I can see in those apartments that would cause me not to want to live there. But they're not being leased and the rate is very inexpensive. They're so inexpensive that if, instead of only contributing 150 dollars to the rent of those apartments, if we contributed 300 dollars to those apartments, you'd almost be free to live in. And, and I see subsidizing police officers, professionals to the degree, we have a program, uh, that I, that I'm suspecting has never been heavily used. And that's the, uh, the rental assistance program.
150 dollars one year.
Right, and I suspect the reason it's not being used, it's not enough. I don't think 150 dollars is enough to get people to come down here. I think we need to make it more money. And I see how that could be something that would enhance our downtown. I see how projects like the Pocket Park enhance the community on Locust Street. But boy, having people fill out applications and saying there's no income restraint on it and, and I'm gonna upgrade my electrical service in my house and city taxpayers are gonna pay 80% of that cost. Man, I don't know how that can be administered. And if you're gonna do it, you better advertise this so heavily. Because right now, there's an inside group of people who've all been contacted to say, what do you think about it? And they all think it's great and they're the inside group that's been contacted. And you can already be guaranteed, the applications are already getting ready to be fired in. And you're gonna have so many applications for basically giveaway money, uh, everybody needs renovations to their homes. There's almost nobody who could not use some type of renovation that would significantly improve their home. Everybody at this table can describe something in their house that's not a minor expense, that could absolutely be used.
Well, I, I mean, I think for me, it, it gets to this point of, uh, neighborhood stabilization. In other words, for me, I look at this type of, of program on the residential side. And, and I don't have this huge interest in, in the end-user upgrading, uh, their, their current home. I think that the bigger, uh, interest is the neighbor that's already there that sees the home next to them that's been vacant for the last 11 months. And if, if there were a program whereby that homeowner saw the city working with the realty entity to say, look, you got 1,200 dollars worth of outstanding, you know, liens, uh, fines and fees and things against, against you from the city, bank, mortgage company, realtor entity, what can we do to work with you to get that property back in the hands of an end-user that's gonna responsibly live, uh, and own, live in and own that property? To me, I think that that creates a, a, an air of, of neighborhood stabilization much more quickly and much more visibly than, 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 than offering, uh, a, a program whereby someone can upgrade their roof or their kitchen or their basement or, or add a bathroom, that, that's already living in the home. And, and there's certainly no shortage of, of properties on any one of our city streets that every resident on any one of our city streets can point at and say, I would love for the city to have something that, that, that would nudge that property along to, to, to get back in the hands of an end, of an end-user, of an end homeowner.
And did you say owner-occupied?
Owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied.
I completely agree with Kristen. I, I mean, I, my neighborhood is a prime example.
If I had to waive 200,000 dollars out of the general fund to, to, to pay into the utility fund or, or against these fines and fees to get some of these vacated properties back in the hands of responsible homeowners, rather than, than enlighten the... rather than in the light, frankly, the absent negligent hands of mortgage entities. I think that speaks volumes to changing the character of your neighborhood.
As long as we were assured it was part of a deal, that it would happen. I mean, you're exactly, I agree with your objectives, but we would need, before we waived them, to be assured that that would solve the problem.
I think that that's part of the settlement process.
Contribute to solving the problem. And we won't sign the bottom line until, hey, it was going back out on the market for ownership.
I think that's completely part of the settlement process, you know? You get that rebated settlement to return that to homeownership.
I absolutely agree.
Would it make sense for us to work some more on the residential or the neighborhood side of this along the lines you're suggesting? Can we move forward with the two commercial sides?
I support that strongly.
I support that strongly as well.
At least those two components, just to get, we've got some momentum going on working with investors and focusing on downtown.
When we talked about, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to bring up the funding. I think we can go ahead and see how it works. But I think the problem with the funding is that the million and a half that's in the CIP was bond funded. Is that correct? And that makes it difficult to apply. And we're looking around. And the caution I have to the other council members and the other elected officials is, you know, we've got to be careful what we approve now because, yeah, that's a one-time thing. But so is extra expenses for MELP. So is, you know, we're still looking at stadium sites. All those things to rival this and to commit all of that to this project at this time. I hesitate to say, okay, there's the one and a half million out of fund balance or whatever. Now, maybe we take the Army Reserve. Did you realize we have, we have to be careful? Because when we say reserve, we have two, two things.
And I think our bottom line is on these big projects that are going to require the money, they're going to come to us. And we're going to look at it.
We're going to have to say how we're, maybe that's how.
We're going to say how we fund it.
How they fund it.
Yeah, because we're obviously going to have to decide whether this project merits this kind of city money. And if it does, we will have a way to finance it. I'm convinced if we think it's meritorious.
Well, and I think one important point that hasn't been made yet is that this is not, this first third, these grants are not money upfront. This is a guarantee of financing when the project is completed.
Yeah, but once we head into a deal, you know, we need to reserve it on our books at some point, even if we don't pay it out for a year. But yeah, once the council approves it, I think probably Michelle will be setting that aside.
But it does sound like.
We may have to pay it out for a year.
There's pretty clear consensus that we want to move forward on the commercial aspect of this grant program.
I'm not fine if it's through bond financing.
No, I think we understood you were talking about using the reserve fund.
That's correct. And I thought when we talked about this before, we were lowering.
Which reserve fund?
The general fund reserve.
Yeah, okay. I want to make sure.
I thought we talked about this before. We were lowering the first, the first third grants for city center to 100,000. I thought we had that conversation before that the minimum was going to be 100,000.
We, the staff toured the downtown and we looked at the projects that we would anticipate people would be undertaking. And in order to meet the goals that were discussed, it's staff's opinion that a project in addition to acquisition would be at least $450,000. We didn't see any projects that would be less than that. And that's why we were drawing the basement at 150.
And then what about the one at 25,000?
The $25,000 to $50,000, initially that was a $50,000. And we built in the flexibility as directed by the council. And again, we were looking at smaller projects. You have to have a basement if we're going to, in terms of financing.
I don't mind the basement. I'm just curious of why it's set at 25 and not lower.
Well, in terms of being able to bring about some visible and impactful change. And we are looking at, even though they're smaller projects, they're still decent-sized projects.
So why, why do we set then a limit of only 50,000 on those?
I think we're looking at how much funds we have available. I think we started at the 1.5, backed out four projects downtown of a million. Backed out 300,000 for citywide in the residential. And then we have 200,000. How would we allocate that? And staff came up with the ceiling of 50.
I think part of the thing was set the dollar amounts high enough that you're getting truly significant projects in terms of improvements to the buildings.
And on the residential side, we'll go back and separately from any discussions publicly to date, staff have been working on some concepts to change housing. And when we look at our single-family homeownership program that we had historically, we never changed the inside of the homes to make them more desirable. We went with the original floor plans. Blowing out walls, creating loft-style open spaces can help attract a different demographic. And Cleveland has a program like that. And we've been exploring that. And perhaps too, that could tie into the recommendations by the council tonight. So we'll bring that back at a future work session.
I think we appreciate you trying to find solutions. It's just a tough nut to crack. It really is.
It certainly is, sir. Yeah, there's some good work you've done so far. Let me raise a couple of issues if I could. First, I applaud the commercial program. When I look at the future of downtown Hagerstown, all I see ahead of me is black, bleak, terrible. But this is a program of some hope. And hopefully will energize developers to come in here and buy some buildings and refurbish them. And they'll serve as examples to other developers what can be done in downtown Hagerstown to maybe lift the curtain of bleakness a little bit. But I have to say that I also agree with Kristen. And I'm going to raise a specific issue. I've raised this issue with some of you before, and nothing seems to be happening on it. So it needs to be raised. On Locust Street, right across from the Alms House, there's some buildings, one of which is occupied by Mr. Brock Smith and his family. And the ones on either side are falling down. They're junk. Now, Mr. Smith puts money into his building, into his place, trying to keep it as best he can. But he's not a wealthy man. But the other two properties, at least one of them, has sprung leaks in the roof. The water is coming into Mr. Smith's house, and soon probably will be on the other side as well. And somehow those houses have either got to be torn down or under Kristen's suggestion refurbished and sold to be occupied. So that Mr. Smith's house isn't destroyed in the meantime. His investment in his house isn't destroyed. I can tell you from numerous conversations, he's a losing heart. I don't blame him. And that block down there is in really difficult shape. And to lose a man like him who has persisted in living down there in spite of this and the conditions would be a terrible thing. So maybe Kristen's idea is something that can be helpful to Mr. Smith and probably lots of others around town. So thanks for listening. Thank you. So we will bring back, a motion will be on the preliminary agenda for next week. And we'd be seeking approval on the 18th for the commercial side of this first third program.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
We're a little ahead of schedule tonight, so we'll go ahead and do city administrators' comments.
None for me to see.
Turn to council comments. Who would like to go first?
I'll go.
Mr. Munson.
I'd like to congratulate, applaud, commend, whatever I can do to acknowledge the people who made the Blues Fest possible. It was incredible. I spent all day Friday there. I spent all day Saturday there. And I mean, there are not enough words to say how good a job was done. There are not enough words to thank what the 200 volunteers that participated in it. There are not enough good words to thank our staff who lived at that, who lived at that thing for the weekend and had worked on it for weeks and for months. And there's certainly not enough words to thank Carl Disck for originating it and helping keep it going all these years. It was just a wonderful event. It really, it really, everything went right. The weather went right. There were no, there were no major incidents that the police had to respond to. And congratulations to everyone, including the city council and mayor, who has made it possible. Hopefully next year's is going to be even bigger and better. That's my comment, Mr. Mayor.
Who would like to go next? Go for it. Couple of things. The, and these are just sort of items that I think are out there on the table. The first is, we've all probably received a number of continued emails regarding issues that residents have at Hager Street. So I assume that we're making some headway in addressing those. And if we're not, and frankly, if there aren't adequate resources, legislative resources, you know, at the tips of the fingers of staff to address those issues, then I think that, you know, then I think we have an obligation to look at those issues that are, when they arise, to ensure that we have adequate enforcement measures. The second is, I know that some time ago, we had discussions with a group, SORA. And I know that there was some reference to receipt of monies from the state for planning. I'm assuming that we'll have some confirmation at some point of what that funding will look like, if it exists, and you know, and how it would be received. And the next point, I guess, is in a little bit of relation to that, and that is in regard to the stadium. I don't know if the rest of you have been contacted by folks from Fredericksburg, reporters and such. But obviously, I've had at least some contact. We've seen some of the articles from some of them. And I don't think it's any huge secret to anybody in this community or theirs that it is likely the Suns that they are negotiating with. But I don't think we're privy, as Lou pointed out in one of his comments in the articles, that we're not really privy to what, you know, another community is, you know, may or may not be negotiating with another private entity. That being said, we've clearly exercised some effort for alternative locations. I don't know where that currently stands. But as I said to you in my email, from my perspective, two results occur. And the first result is that Fredericksburg, as a community, markets heavily for a team like the Suns achieves that task. And clearly, given its demographics, has the ability to out-market this community for clearly an interest by that team owner to want to be in Virginia and closer to that urban market and succeeds in that effort. The second is that Fredericksburg, for whatever reason, would come to a similar conclusion that Winchester reached. And in that effort would result in an increased difficulty of this body being able to convince our own public that what two other communities have turned down, we should somehow find a way to achieve. And I think that that argument loses palatability to a public that is marginally interested in it to begin with. That being said, if there are discussions that are to be had by this body, I think we need to have it back on the agenda. If there are, if there's an interest by members of this body, you know, to select a location, then I think that we need to get to that and get it over with. Which brings me to my last point, which is something that I shared with the mayor and Bruce. And I had toyed with when I would provide it to the rest of the council. And I think it goes along those lines, what I told you before, in closed session, that, you know, I feel like we're being led at times rather than leading the discussion on some of these issues. So what I developed was a list of five priorities. You'll note that one of those five is not the stadium, surprisingly. I put that on the sixth priority of sort of the mayor's radar of those larger things that I think can only be negotiated through a point person. But they include items that we discussed tonight, like a residential neighborhood strategy. We need a strategy to reinvest in the stabilization of our traditionally owner-occupied neighborhoods. We are losing them and we need to start leading in that strategy. We need a strategy for the demolition of MELP. And I know as simple as that sounds, it includes a much larger picture, like the issue of a stadium, like the issue of the Board of Education vacating the space on Willow, and like the redevelopment of the hospital. I think MELP is central to the stability of that area and the redevelopment of that area. So the third is an urban core market strategy. You know, one of the things that was presented tonight was how we define districts in our downtown. And a good example is, just as Councilmember Munson points out, the issues on Locust Street, two blocks away from the university, are miles apart in terms of the difference in dynamic and the issues that exist within that core. So I think we need a strategy for downtown that actually assesses these in a block-by-block nature. Because each block is clearly different and experiencing different things. I think we need a long-range budget strategy. I pointed it out during budget deliberations. And I think that we need to get ahead of that before we get to FY '15. And then the last is, I think we need an intergovernmental strategy, if we're ever to sort of get all parties on board and be able to provide our EDC with that sort of city idea of how we can meet the EDC's strategic priority in terms of city redevelopment. So, you know, I put that out there and it's a lengthy memo, so I'll send it via email. But those, to me, I think are the five big items that we need to be directing the focus of this administration on. Thank you. Who would like to go next?
Nope, because I have to leave.
Okay.
I'm sure that everybody has received, and I don't know if it all came through, and that has to do with hub scrap. Still problems up there, starting at 4:30 in the morning, ending whenever. There really has not been anything cleared on that. They've been faced with this for three years now. So it's a matter of really now looking into it. I don't remember in talking with Steve as to what the next step was. But I know that Kathy was very upset, and especially now since she is home and not in school and cannot sleep when all of this is happening. One neighbor thought that there was an explosion. That is just how bad it is there. And also, I want to say thanks to Captain Holtzman for.
Chief.
Captain. That's all right. I'll go back. It mudds the brain today. Chief. It will stay in my brain the other way. For addressing the whole nuisance abatement thing. I have no clue as to how a petition got started when there really was not any interaction with. Did anybody get any interaction with from a party?
I tried to email all those people back and it kept coming back as undelivered.
No, 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 I'm not talking about the petition. I'm talking about how one. I'm talking about how one person from the city seemed to be linked with this, okay? With a community group, and how we're getting emails then back from people everywhere, you know? And it's, this is the city of Hagerstown where this has been on the books. And we were gung ho when it was on the books, and we were quite effective. And I don't know how we've kind of left it go, because it has been brought up before at Neighborhoods First, at least two and a half years ago by Judy Willer, as to, okay, we have it, where is it going?
Talking about the excessive calls for service at particular properties that allow the police to take action.
I'm talking about the drug, I'm talking about the ones that, right, the nuisance abatement law. And, you know, this is the one that is prime when it is dealing with mostly drugs.
They were being handled by the state's attorney's office, and they seem to do more.
Well, what happened was, is that I think things changed down there, the shifting of the guard. And it was like, okay, you know this letter that needs to be sent? Well, I don't know if that's priority or not, so.
Were we still funding, that was a funded position specifically for the nuisance abatement, as I recall.
We still have that nuisance abatement attorney, do we not?
Yeah, we, we funded a portion of it through the, what used to be the CCAP program.
Right, right.
And we've continued to partner with them.
And it is still, it is still there. But the thing is that it's very, very important. But for somebody, not to at least address someone here at council and to go with a petition, you know? I don't know. But anyway, thanks to Holtzman, because he did address it. And I have to leave.
Thank you, Penny. Mr. Brubaker?
Sure, real quick, I agree on, I hope we can make progress on the issues on Hager Street. I drove down the street, and then when I had time, walked the street. And there's a lot of potential on that street, too. It's, it's a great, interesting street. And the, the second thing is thanks to the Blues Fest staff. Everybody did a great job as usual, and elaborating, they knew. Appreciate it, I talked to a number during the event, and I think it went well.
Thank you. Mr. Munson?
I was all Saturday, and I didn't show up on Saturday, unfortunately. But otherwise, yes, Don, you said it perfectly, and it's, what a nice thing for the city of Hagerstown. And the, the next big event for the city of Hagerstown is coming up a week from Friday, when this bike race comes into town. And I just encourage everybody, both from, from government to our citizens, to come down. It is, it, like the Blues Fest, is a very, very well-done operation, like Augustoberfest is, like Thunder in the Streets. And just encourage everybody to come downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just echo all the praise for the Blues Fest volunteers. Over two hundred volunteers, over ninety sponsors. And I believe they raised close to a hundred thousand dollars, if not over that amount this year. So it's really a job well done. And, and that's all the comments that I have for the evening. Any other comments from council members? All right, with that, we will adjourn. Actually, before that, we need a motion to go into executive session. The, the motion has been changed in terms of the reasons to go into executive session. The first one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. The second reason is, is not what is listed under number two, but it is to obtain, to consult with council to obtain legal advice. So the motion should include those two.
That would be the motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. All in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? No. Three fours, one against. All right, thank you.